Good evening and welcome to the organizational meeting for the Beverly Hills Unified School District this rainy December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. To kick us off, I would like to ask politely if our mayor, Dr. Gold, will please lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and now it is my pleasure, as we do every year, to have our wonderful madrigals perform for all of us in celebration of this beautiful event tonight that releases me from the shackles of this seat. Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much, Mr. Margot. We had a request for the Hatikva this evening, so we're going to start off with that. And then we'll sing a winter song and a Hanukkah song and a Christmas carol. And then we're off to BV for a little more Christmas caroling tonight, if you can believe it. All righty. Two, three, four. It's rare that the wind and weather actually makes a difference. Might as well change. All right, "Joy to the World" is on page thirty-one.
Joy to the world, the Lord has come. Let earth receive her King. Let every heart prepare him room. And heaven and nature sing. And heaven and nature sing. And heaven and nature sing. Joy to the world, the Savior reigns. Let man thy songs employ. While fields and floods, rocks, hills and plains. Repeat the sounding joy. Repeat, repeat the sounding joy. He rules the world with truth and grace. And makes the nations prove the glories of his righteousness. And wonders of his love. And wonders of his love.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, students. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Marcus. Any questions? Oppositions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Moving on to public comment. Is Tina here? Tina Weiner? Nope. Okay. Howard Goldstein, you're up. Just two minutes and fifty-nine seconds.
I usually get five. Good evening, Superintendent Bregy, members of the board, teachers, students, parents, honored guests, and of course, my good friend, outgoing board president, Noah Margot. I would first like to take this opportunity to congratulate Dr. Amanda Stern on your ascension to board president. I have no doubt you will continue to make BHUSD a kinder, gentler, and more inclusive institution. To the perennial, Rochelle Marcus, you have demonstrated the wisdom that does not come from education alone. It comes from living a life with gratitude and being open to learning from each experience. You are prepared to take on yet another leadership role. Our community is forever in your debt. Tonight, we gather not to just say a job well done, but to express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for the incredible public service rendered by Noah Margot during his twelve years on the board and counting. Noah, your dedication to the betterment of our community has been nothing short of exemplary. As you prepare to wind down your work on the board next year, it is only fitting that we take a moment to reflect on the countless contributions you've made during your time in office. Under your guidance, the district has fostered advancements in curriculum development, technology integration, and community engagement. Your tireless effort to ensure that every student receives the best possible education has not gone unnoticed. You've been a driving force behind initiatives that promote inclusivity, diversity, and a nurturing learning environment. The positive changes the district experienced under your leadership are a testament to your vision, your resilience, and your unwavering belief in the power of public education. As you begin your inevitable transition to a new chapter in your life, please know that your impact here will be a lasting one. The seeds of change you've planted will continue to grow and bear fruit for years to come. The BHUSD is undoubtedly stronger, more vibrant, and better equipped for the future because of your selfless public service. Noah, you're like fine wine, aging gracefully while somehow retaining the youthful energy of a caffeinated squirrel. You have taught us all that even in the chaotic world of school boards, there is still room for honesty, laughter, dedication, and a passion for student achievement. Noah, may your last year on the board and future endeavors be as rewarding and fulfilling as your time here has been to all of us. We wish you every success in your future pursuits and will forever cherish the legacy of excellence you've helped build within the Beverly Hills Unified School District. Let us all just say, "Now Noah knows." Good luck to you.
Thank you, Howard. And we go from one former school board president to another, Melissa Roston.
Thank you, and Howard, you're a hard act to follow. Good evening to Dr. Bregy and all the school board members and our elected officials that are here and to all the students and parents and teachers and administrators. This is somewhat deja vu for me, having served on the board for two terms in the past, but we were always across the street in the old boardroom. And I was actually on the board when we built this new science center. And very proud of that and very happy to see it in such good use. Having served on the board for two terms, I really do understand the difficult job that all of you are tasked with, and I thank you for your service and your commitment to our community. I was lucky enough to have all four of my children attend the Beverly Hills schools from kindergarten up through high school. And now my eldest grandchild is in TK, so we've kind of come full circle. And tonight, I just want to take a moment to first thank Noah Margot for his service as board president this year and also all that you've done these past twelve years. Noah has proven to always prioritize students. He has shown dedication to supporting instructional enhancements in all grade levels, and he has been an advocate for mental health in our schools approving the BVMS Wellness Center. He was instrumental in expanding the district's robust security plan, which we are all very happy for, and was beautifully presented by Mr. Mead at the last PTA council meeting. It really is very impressive. There he is. I am especially pleased by Mr. Margot's advocacy in including financial literacy as a graduation requirement. It is really shocking to see how many kids don't get it right. I sit on the board of a college, and we have to deal with that at the college level when kids come onto campus and really can't quite figure it all out. So, thank you for doing that in high school. And I also want to congratulate, well, first, sorry, I want to thank you, Noah, for serving our community for over twelve years. I think I may have said that already. Excuse me. And I also want to congratulate Dr. Stern as the incoming board president. I know you will continue to serve our students with an open mind and to continue to advocate for educational excellence, as have all of the fellow board members that are here. So, thank you very much for giving me the time to speak, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I get a motion for the approval of Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Four, Zero-Six?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Three dash Twenty-Twenty-Four dash Zero-Six.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus, and thank you, Ms. Wells, for seconding. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries. Good evening. Whereas Noah Margot has served as president of the Beverly Hills Unified School District from December twenty-twenty-two through December twenty-twenty-three, and whereas he has emphasized the importance of placing the topic of education in the forefront of the Board of Education meetings, and whereas he has innovatively produced, filmed, and edited thirteen episodes of "Now Noah Knows," and whereas he has proactively formulated and presented the idea for the removal of the construction trailers and eventually moving their offices to the BHHS Administrative Bridge, saving the district thousands of dollars, and whereas he has co-written a presentation proposal, which was ultimately selected for the California School Boards Association Annual Education Conference for the first time ever, and whereas he strongly advocated and recognized students participating in the No Tech November Challenge, and whereas he fostered his passion for the performing arts in a cameo appearance in the spring musical, "Mean Girls," and whereas he has led our meetings with dignity, style, and with a sense of humor that will be missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education does hereby honor Noah Margot for his leadership and outstanding service on behalf of the Beverly Hills Unified School District presented this nineteenth day of December twenty-twenty-three.
Yay.
Yay.
Look at this. It's a code.
Yeah, and also, we do have a framed copy of the resolution that I just read.
This is great. I'll take the picture of my family down and put this.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I noticed that Tina just came in. And if you weren't the head of the BHF, I would just cast off your tardiness, Tina. But you did turn in a comment card early on, so I will defer the podium to you for three minutes.
I appreciate, I'm sorry I was late. I was on the phone with the DMV and was so grateful that they spoke with me, so. So, good evening, and on behalf of the Beverly Hills Education Foundation Board, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Dr. Stern as the new BHUSD Board President. You're taking over this presidency at an exciting time with El Rodeo coming online and with the high school following close behind. So, as a school community, we have so much to look forward to in the upcoming school year, and we look forward to working closely with you and the board to continue to bring innovative programming and projects to the schools, the students in the district. Mr. Margot, although you'll still be on the board for another year after this, it's quite an accomplishment to be a twelve-year board member and a three-time school board president. You've been on the board for almost the whole time that I've been a parent here in the district. You have lived construction for the last twelve years, first at Horace Mann, then Beverly Hills High School and El Rodeo. We are so fortunate to have you as the constant through the whole process, someone who's been there from the beginning and who was able to share what worked, what didn't, what to watch out for, and to keep us on track. After all this time, you continue to put students first and continue to push for BHUSD to be a lighthouse district in the nation. You continually push for rigor in the curriculum and for excellence from our teachers in the classroom. The addition of financial literacy for high school graduation is just one example of your push to make sure that our kids leave BHHS prepared for the world beyond BHUSD. With your "Now Noah Knows" series, you have taken us all into the classroom to see what excellence looks like. You applaud the hard work of the teachers, you've spotlighted and all staff when they reach milestones together. You were a champion of reconfiguration and for the establishment of the middle school and have continued to work hard to strengthen that program, most recently by supporting the addition of the Bulldog Aid Wellness Center. You've led with integrity and respect, and you've been a great role model for student and parent leaders in the district. Personally, I appreciate that you've always been there. You give me the chance to speak. You always pick up the phone when I call you. And as a school leader, as a parent, as a PTA president, I turn to you for advice, and I just really appreciate that you're always there to share. So, thank you for your commitment to the district. Being a community leader isn't always easy, but I truly believe that when you find that you've helped just one family, one teacher, or one student through your actions, it makes the whole thing worthwhile. You've truly made a difference to so many, Noah, and I know that our school community is all the better for the time, love, and energy you've given to all of us. So, Mr. Margot and Dr. Stern, I'm so glad that you'll both be on the board next year, together for one more year, and really excited to see what's coming in twenty-twenty-four. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome some comments for our outgoing president. We can start with Sophia.
Mr. Margot, so while reviewing this week's agenda, seeing that it was organized a little differently, I went back to the organizational board meeting from last year to see how things were sort of going to go. And I came across your comments that you made in your speech as an incoming president. And I was curious to see the goals you were planning to lay out for your last presidential term on the board. And unsurprisingly, of all the goals that board members are tasked with considering in their positions, you said that your priority was going to be returning the board's focus to education. This, I think, as everyone has emphasized already and as we've all seen and experienced, has really been highlighted through the developments in curriculum options and highlights like financial literacy requirements and as well as outside of the curriculum, like with the mental health resources and developments that you've made, like the Bulldog Aid Wellness Center. And so, I'm really thankful for your last term as president and the twelve years that you've served us completely. I know you have a little more to go, so no tearful vibes yet. But I want to say that, again, I'm really thankful, as well as many of the students, whether or not they know it, for all the work you've done for the students, truly. That's been your focus, like the children. Thankful for that and excited to have you over here as my new seat partner going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Ms. Wells?
Well, Noah, I just want to say, twelve years on the board and your third term as president, it's been my pleasure to be serving up here with you and to be here with you during your last term as president. You really did a fantastic job leading our board this year. You just really, you kept us like a Swiss clock and all our meetings started on time, and I really appreciate that. And it's true, Noah's focus has always been about the well-being of our kids and our students, and he really has been so consistent about that, not from the time I've been on the board, but particularly this year as our board president and leading our board. I really feel strongly that we have such a fantastic board and we're working so well together, and I really love our camaraderie, and you really did a fantastic job leading us this year, keeping the focus on education. I love all of our discussions that we've had around study sessions and the continuation of our strategic plan and reiterating that. And I have to say that the Noah Knows segments really just grew on me as we continued on, and I just think that those will go down in history, along with your performance on the stage this year and your return. And also, on that note, I have to say, Noah's always about the students, and in particular, he's been such a fan around our performing arts program. And it's been very consistent, as well as his performing in it. But it's just been really a pleasure to watch him find the joy as these programs are really building again and really starting to truly shine in the best way. And we can't wait for B-three and B-four to open and have that venue and also to have the venue at El Rodeo this coming year. So, thank you, Noah, for your service. Thank you for your camaraderie and being a terrific colleague.
Thank you. Mrs. Manichieri?
Thank you. I have to say, Noah, I think that you and I did not know each other at all before this past year, and I am very grateful for the opportunity to have served with you. On the outside, I think that we seem very different in a lot of ways. Your youngest is a senior, my youngest is a TK'er, and everything else in between. But behind closed doors, I think that we actually have absolutely the same values, which is that we love Beverly Hills Unified School District, and we want the same thing for it. I really appreciate your guidance in terms of, you know, the rules, the regulations, the way things go, keeping us on track. I know that I've been bringing a big energy and I've had so many ideas, and every time I call you, you say, "Okay, well, let's do it this way, then let's bring it on that way." And so, I appreciate you opening the doors for my thoughts, and it even seems like some of the things that I've been proposing or trying to learn more about have been on your agenda for twelve years now. So, I appreciate you opening those doors and making room, you know, for my approaches and for helping me to, you know, be a more efficient and appropriate and on-track board member. So, thank you for your service, and I will say, I think we have a lot more work to do together in the next year. So, notwithstanding that you won't be president, you know, we're not letting you off the hook yet. We've got a little bit more to do.
Thank you. Mrs. Marcus?
Well, Noah, you know that with me, less is more. And I have to tell you, everybody has so eloquently already spoken about what you've done for the school board and for the school district. It's been absolutely marvelous. But there is an expression, "The third time will be a charm." And you didn't need this charm, as you just completed a third term as the president of the Beverly Hills School District, and you did it very successfully, as you also did the first two times. So, your charm was not needed, it was already there. You've dedicated yourself to Beverly Hills Unified School District as a member of the board for the last twelve years. I think it's going to be thirteen, if I'm not mistaken. And you've proven yourself to be the leader, giving of your time to navigate our schools. As you take your seat at the end of the table, I am sure you will still continue, we will still continue to witness your commitment, your leadership in the school district, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you. Noah, it's been a pleasure, because at least I've had a little longer time to work with you, and thank you for everything you did.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Well, Noah, a lot of people have already said a lot of great things that I wanted to cover, but I do have a few things that I would like to say to you. As someone who studies psychology and takes great pride in understanding people's strengths and weaknesses, especially in terms of their cognitive and their personality. And one thing I have really appreciated about you is I find you to be a very linear thinker and very logical, which has really been a very nice gift for all of us. And in many ways, you have organized us and have given us strategies that have really made sense, and I really appreciate that. The other sentiments are also true about you, that you have consistently put the students and their well-being first. You've also had a lot of humor that I have very much appreciated, and some very good, quick, yep, quick-witted. I very much enjoy the Now Noah Knows segments. And there's part two also? We all have enjoyed it, for sure. And for example, I had never seen the ceramics in action, and that was great to see that. So, I think you really uncovered, for viewers, some of the great parts of our schools and right there in the so-called trenches. You have had a balanced perspective in general. So, you have been able to look at the fiscal and the construction matters, but you've also had consideration for how that will impact the students on a very real and practical, everyday basis. And it has really been an honor to hear your thoughts on those things. You have also been a mentor to me, as this is my first term, and you have given me a lot of great advice as a friend, as someone who was a former educator. I know you were in the classroom about 20 years ago or so, maybe about when I was in the classroom. We are also fellow parents of young pop stars and musicians, and we have related on that level, too. So, I want to thank you, and it's truly been an honor, and I really look forward to the year ahead of us.
So, I think I have the unique privilege and honor to probably have worked with you, for you, the longest up here on the dais. It goes back to the end of 2016 at the interview table, when I was interviewing for my position, and it's certainly something I will never forget, that opportunity, meeting you then, and then just working with you for the last seven, going on eight years. I also want to, you know, your second term now as president is, no year is easy. But your first year as president, when I had the opportunity to work with you, was a pretty tough year. That was the implementation year for reconfiguration. And the comments that you heard tonight about keeping focused on instruction is what helped us get through that year of implementation. And that's still continued into this year as your presidency, as you kept instruction as your focus. Your temperament, your sense of humor, just being there when I needed to run things past before going to the full board with things happening in the district, always encouraging me through transparency to bring things through the superintendent's report, but to also really look at our agendas and make sure that everything that we're doing, all the business of the district, was displayed on our agendas when we were in our meetings. And so, I thank you for that. I thank you for this next opportunity to continue to work with you, as we do have a lot of work to do. But most especially, I want to thank you for really understanding your role as a board member and giving me an opportunity to keep learning as a superintendent. You've heard many times tonight just the focus on instruction, but you went a little bit further, and that you've always encouraged and you checked on me to make sure that I was getting back into our schools as a superintendent. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. My turn. Well, that certainly went fast, didn't it? That was like George Santos's term. Actually, I think his was faster. It seems like only yesterday that we were getting served with a notice of petition to recall. Ah, the good old days. I want to thank a host of folks who made this past year, well, pass. First of all, Commissioner Dr. Margot. I'm gonna try to not get all Craig Bugbee on you here, okay? You don't get enough credit for all that you do for this community and the individuals in it. Perhaps if you did, you might stop doing those things. So, I'll just say, all the kindness and civility you experience, it's her. She lives and breathes helping others. So, thank you, Laura. You helped me get through this year, and I love and appreciate you. I want to thank my kids, Solomon and Jax, who are fortunately working this evening, otherwise I'd still be paying their rent. They're pretty good at avoiding the shrapnel of me being on the board now, but I still give up time with them to do this, so thanks, boys. Reese, on the other hand, Reese is caught in the crossfire almost every day. And like Laura, she has helped me navigate this past year. Oi, has she had some year to navigate? Thank you. You know where you are. Colleagues, hopefully, I have continued to set an example of how to handle this position with grace and humility, and I couldn't have done it without you. No board president really can. Most of our accomplishments are ours as a majority, as well as the things we muck up, which, of course, hasn't happened in, what, 12 years? I want to acknowledge our city council members that are here today, the other half of this town's top 10 elected officials. We share a common interest, and I am proud of the work we do together. Dr. Bregge, thank you for getting me in my crazy vision of student success. I know there's a district to run that doesn't always have the luxury of staying laser-focused on student achievement, but I know you also believe in our mission. Commissioner Krausauer, thank you for being the rock in that office for all three of my years as board president. It's a relief. Raphael, Dustin, Matt, Laura, Sandy, Will, all of the supporting staff. I sincerely thank you all for being part of this amazing district team and leading your respective departments with your experience and professionalism. Rebecca Starkins, who is not here tonight, has branded this district so well that at the recent CSBA conference, there were other districts trying to poach her. Thank you, Rebecca. She's not here, but I'm sure she'll watch this, and I could not say anything. Mr. Stewart, Dr. Scon, Mrs. Kaber, and Mr. Bugbee, thank you all for leading your sites, and I truly do mean leading. And thank you to all of our APs, Ms. Decatral, Mr. Chang, Ms. Kobellis, Mr. Waters, Mr. Little, Ms. Perkins, Ms. Kim, Dr. Kim, sorry, Mr. Painter, Ms. Walker, and Ms. Wong. Thank you all. You deal with kids and parents on a daily basis, and thank God you don't have to deal with us. Thank you to all of our staff, both certificated and classified and other. You are the daily wonders of our district. I have more to say about you all, but I am deferring those words until my farewell remarks next year. Everyone I have acknowledged here is for students. That's where I want to direct the rest of my comments. Students, it's all on you now. I believe we, and by we, I mean the district, have put all the elements in place for you to succeed. The rest of this race has to be won by you. You can't leave your success up to others. I had this idea at the beginning of my board presidency to go into classrooms and film our exceptional teachers doing what they do, bringing a little bit of their style of education to the masses, or at least to seven of you. So, if folks wondered how a teacher instructs about triangles or reading comprehension techniques, the skeletal system, or, dare I say, dancing, they can watch these few minutes and get a glimpse of what is going on in the classrooms on a daily basis. I took on something that I wasn't entirely comfortable with. I didn't know how to use Final Cut Pro. I wasn't always spot-on with lighting and the sound. My graphics were sometimes funny, but sometimes a little amateur. But I got better, and that was the point. That's what it all comes down to. Learning. The construction, the security, the mental wellness. All those roads should lead back to exceptional instruction. We have to get that right all of the time. That's what will separate us from every other public school in not only the state, but the nation. It is not an impossible task, and as I've iterated time and again, it will take all of us to make that happen. So, in January, when we are all tan and rested, or skied out and had our fill of hot cocoa, remember my words tonight. We get back to work, we work hard, we work with a purpose, and we find success. It doesn't come to us, we go to it. It's been an honor and a privilege serving the community in this role. Dr. Stern, who, by the way, is the first doctor since Dr. Goldberg to lead this board, I wish you a productive and successful year. Thank you. And with that, and I believe is my last act, I would like to nominate Dr. Amanda Stern for president.
I'll second.
That's a motion, by the way.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, take the podium. Councilmember Bossy?
And at this time, I'd like to introduce Councilmember Lily Bossy, who has served as mayor three times and has been on the city council since 2011. During her 2022 term as mayor, Councilmember Bossy spearheaded numerous initiatives surrounding public safety, such as the city's Real-Time Watch Center that monitors the camera system and the drone surveillance network 24 hours a day, and the BHPD alert and text email program that keeps the community informed on police activity. Councilmember Bossy is an alumni of Beverly Vista Elementary School and Beverly Hills High School, and was inducted in the Hall of Fame from the Beverly Hills High Alumni. Councilmember Bossy has also served as president and chairperson of the Beverly Hills Education Foundation, for which she received the Spirit Philanthropy Award. And many of you know her in here, and she is a great communicator and one of our biggest cheerleaders that I have met in Beverly Hills. So, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Honestly, I'm just Lily, and you know that. I wanted, before I talk about our incredible Dr. Mandy Stern, who is going to take us to a whole new stratosphere, I want to say thank you to Noah and this incredible board. Thank you to my remarkable colleagues. I see Mayor Gold here, I know Vice Mayor Friedman was here, as well as all of my colleagues. We have been an incredible team. I don't think I've ever seen, in all the years that I've been involved, such a remarkable partnership between a school board and a city, as we have seen recently. So, very, very proud of that. And what I'm most proud of, I have to tell you, is being an alum of this school district. And all of you, whether you're a parent, whether you're a student, it really shapes you into who you are and who you become. And tonight is really a very, very special night. I was sitting here thinking and remembering back a number of years ago, when we were going through a hard time, and it was the COVID time. And I had the honor of installing the wonderful, wonderful Rochelle Marcus as president. And we had to do it on Zoom, because we weren't able to be together. And here we are, a number of years later, and we get to be together. And look at how much we've all been through, and look at where we're going. And when Dr. Stern, Mandy, talked to me about having this honor, I said to her, "This is not a coincidence. This is not a coincidence that you are the president at this time. You are the right person at the right time at the right school district, and there's a reason for it. We have all had a number of challenging years, and we definitely need you. We need somebody who is a person who understands mental wellness, who understands whether it's the students, whether it's the parents, whether it's the community. We're still going through a hard time, and in some ways even harder. You're a school psychologist. You understand, and you understand the values, the mission, and you have the vision for our school district and our community. So, this community is grateful for you at this time. And just always remember that, it's not a coincidence that this time is your time now. So, with that, the moment we've been waiting for, and I'm not gonna take a chance, I'm gonna put on my glasses. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dr. Mandy Stern, do solemnly swear...
I, Dr. Mandy Stern, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...that I take this obligation freely...
...that I take this obligation freely...
...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
...and that I will well and faithfully...
...and that I will well and faithfully...
...discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter...
...discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter...
Congratulations, President!
Good evening, everyone. Lily, you are so amazing, and it really is a privilege and an honor to be sworn in by you. I couldn't think of a better human being to swear me in, and I am truly honored, and I will always remember the words that you shared with us tonight. Thank you so much. The late Supreme Court Justice Sandra Day O'Connor remarked that "We don't accomplish things alone." And I thought that that was a very good quote. If you could please allow me to spend a few moments here acknowledging and thanking the following people. Mayor Dr. Gold, members of city council, city manager and city staff, fire and police departments, Dr. Bregge, his cabinet, teachers and staff, PTA, Beverly Hills Education Foundation, and my colleagues to my right. I would also like to make a special thank you to my loving wife and my two boys. And Lisa is always someone who gives me such intelligent wisdom and humor, and I could just laugh every single day by the things that she has said, and that has been a fantastic gift to me. Among these walls tonight and throughout our city, we have greatness and we have resiliency. Many of us are children or grandchildren of Holocaust survivors. Many of us are descendants of people who experienced horrific acts of hatred and dehumanization on this land and also overseas. And yet, Beverly Hills is known throughout the world as a place of prosperity, of affluence and abundance. I am heartened that many residents, councils, and commissions, and many individuals who are in fact here tonight, really do give back. And this is the role modeling for our students at BHUSD. Our kids have literally run marathons and played soccer matches to support two of our students who were stricken with cancer. Our eyes teared up, and we felt the compassion and grief shared by BHUSD students who led a vigil in honor of the victims destroyed by the massacre in Israel on October 7th. Our very own Beverly Hills Education Foundation's teens recently gifted presents to families from the West Side Shelter for the holidays. And with our newly established Behavior and Accountability Panel, we continue to reflect and refine... we continue to reflect and refine student behavior and the guidance that we give. As I begin my fourth year on the school board, I am mindful of all of our accomplishments and what work lies ahead of us. We were recognized recently by the college board for our improvement and increased access given to students for the advanced placement classes. We have also accelerated the timeline in which we welcome four-year-olds to school in accordance with the nation's universal transitional kindergarten mandate. We have restored accountability among our business and accounting practices, aligning them to our strategic plan, and enjoying three years of positive certification of our budget. We will be navigating the expiration of COVID funds and other changes in the fiscal environment. But we are in a solid and solvent place. We have gotten back on track with construction and modernization of our campuses, with El Rodeo now approaching substantial completion, and it is gorgeous. And our high school buildings and athletic fields soon to debut as well. I am proud that the data from last spring's state testing reveals we have very high reading and writing skills, well above the state standard. And I don't know if you're aware, but many districts are working hard every day to close the gap of learning loss from the pandemic, especially among older grades. Nationally, mathematics continues to be a struggle, and California ranks 38th in math proficiency. I am confident that through our new assessment tools and outstanding educators, we will elevate the math scores of our middle and high school students so that the majority will meet and exceed the state standards. Let's lead with math so that we can comfortably speak the language of STEM and all of its rich opportunities and career paths. As many of you know, school leaders can no longer just focus on operations and instruction. Students will tell you that they saw nothing but black boxes on Zoom for two years, and we have listened. Anxiety and depression have skyrocketed since the pandemic. Last month, we opened the Bulldog Aid Center at the middle school. We have also added more support for the Norman Aid at the high school, which is also for mental wellness. Moving ahead into the new year, I am saddened and concerned by the rise in antisemitism, divisiveness, and loss of morale among many educational environments. I have accepted that we now live among what many might call a non-trust society. With more access to information than ever before, it becomes untenable to know whom or what to trust anymore, and I get that. I would like to ask you, as parents, as residents however, for your trust in us and the confidence that all of us at Beverly Hills School District and the city at large are working hard to ensure the safety, well-being, and academic success of our youngest residents. And with that, I give a final thank you to our students. Thank you. I'll give everyone a moment to get reseated. Are we ready? May I get a motion for the nomination of Vice President?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we nominate Rochelle, or approve Rochelle Marcus for Vice President.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Noah, or Mr. Margot, and Ms. Wells. And now, who will be swearing you in?
Want to vote on that, Dr. Stern?
Oh, yes, okay. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing? Okay. The motion carries, 5-0.
And at this time, I'd like to introduce to you Michael Marty Marcus, class of 1987 at Beverly Hills High School, and Joy Marcus Weiser, also Beverly Hills High School, class of '88. Both attended Hawthorne and then Beverly Hills High School. Marty graduated Georgetown and Pepperdine Law School. Joy has graduated from Boston University with a degree in fine arts and is a professional singer and teaches, and owns her own yoga studio. Welcome.
I had the chance to think about who I'd like to have install me tonight. And I would also like to acknowledge that I'd bring up the whole family, but I have Debbie, my daughter-in-law, and my wonderful grandchildren, Ilan and Aleah, and my wonderful son-in-law, Paul Weiser. And I would bring them all up, but there's no room up here. But I just felt that this was the time, for all the support that they've given me over the five years so far of being on the board, and they have to look forward to three more. So I figured it was time that I'd really get them to acknowledge. And I want to thank everybody, my family, for being here for me tonight. And everybody in the community, the school board, the city council, they know how much Beverly Hills has become a part of me since I moved here in 1963, so.
I just want to say we're very proud of you, Mom.
I'd also like to just point out that this is the first time in some 50-odd years that my mom, aka Mrs. Marcus, actually has to repeat after me.
Good point.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rochelle Marcus, do solemnly swear.
I, Rochelle Marcus, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, and that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
She was a madger, too.
Oh, thank you so much, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for the nomination of Noah Margot as clerk.
I will second that motion. It was interesting that that was what I was thinking about all day long, and I would like to make a little comment if I could about that.
Absolutely.
Last year, when we were discussing the election of the clerk, as you recall, and it had been formally Dr. Bregge, and we said, well, then Mary was the president, stepping down, she took the job as clerk, and I thought how appropriate it would have been for me, and I didn't know that was going to happen so quickly, to nominate you, Noah, as the clerk. So I just wanted to know that two great minds were thinking the same thing, I think, at the same time. So, congratulations. I was thinking sadly what you just thought.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Am I a clerk?
Okay, the motion carries, congratulations. Can I get a motion for the approval of annual motions?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the annual motions.
And I will second that.
Motion made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Ms. Marcus. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the approval of certification of signatures.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Make a motion for the approval of the board meeting dates for January 2024 through June 2025.
I'd just make one comment, and just in case, that there needs to be a change, that we make sure that that will be, you know, at any time, at least for any reason we've made, and need to make a change, that we need to have that in there. So I'm approving it, I just want to make that sometimes things come up, and we need to make sure that we can change dates as needed.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Ms. Marcus.
I would just, I want to ask Dr. Bregge. How closely was this calendar vetted with the city? With their events and all their installations or whatever?
We really aligned it to.
We have their basics.
Yeah, I mean, we aligned it to our own board policy that we have on when we schedule our meetings, which is pretty much in alignment without having too many conflicts.
Okay.
Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Now we move on to the selection of annual representative to the LACSA, which is Los Angeles County School Trustees Association. Can I get a motion?
I think we have to, someone has to be.
I don't know if it's a motion, we just kind of choose it.
Discussion, okay.
Noah, you've done it in the past, right? You want to know?
Who, did you do it this past year, Rochelle?
Mary, I thought.
You did it.
I was the executive board.
She was an officer.
Yeah, she was on the board.
She was the representative, I was the executive board.
I was supposed to do it with you, I think.
Okay. Whatever you would like, I don't.
Do you want, well, is it two people or one usually is?
It's one is the representative. It doesn't stop anybody from going, it's just we have one representative.
Can I also just make the point, too, that they've had some virtual meetings in the past, but they're doing less of those virtual meetings? And so, sometimes, because I also attend those meetings, there's quite a bit of travel involved. So I just want to make sure that people.
Is it Lancaster, or where is it?
It's different places, they rotate.
Yeah, February and April are the next two traveling ones.
Yep.
I would be willing to go, but unfortunately, I don't drive it, you know, at night, so I don't, that's my, unless I can get a ride.
Yeah, okay.
I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah, you could stay with it, and then if you need a sub, I can sub it.
And I attend those as well, so that's not a problem.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So, Marcus.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marcus. For the signing of the annual affidavit of residence.
No, we have to do E.
Election of representative.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Can I get a motion for the election of a representative to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization in October and November?
I think I held this position last year, so I'm willing to continue doing it. It's like a one-off they do in the fall.
Exactly.
It's not, there's really, it's very quiet other than that, so I'll stay, I can stay with that one.
Okay, sounds good.
That we have to vote on, though.
I'll make a motion for the, for Noah Margot as the representative for the LA County Committee on School District Organization in October and November.
Okay, and I'll second. So, motion made by Ms. Wells, seconded by myself, Dr. Stern. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, and then, can I have a motion for the signing of the annual affidavit of residence?
I think that's just an action, correct, Pam? Yeah, we just have to make sure we do it. Do you want to turn these into you when we're done here? Okay.
Okay, so everyone is receiving one?
Do we have to hold up our signed ones to show everybody we signed it?
I'll come after you.
Honey, do I still live at 245 South Palm? She's shaking her head no.
She never sees you, how can she know? You're always up here at the school district.
Okay. Now we move on to item 6G, board liaisons. And this is just a discussion item, not necessarily a voting option. So, city liaisons for president and vice president.
That gets you and I.
That's, okay, so.
It's already dissolved.
Yeah, right.
No problem.
Okay.
I get to work with the wonderful city council again.
Okay, great. All right. Joint Power Agreement, JPA liaisons.
I'd like to continue on that.
Wonderful.
I would as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wells and Ms. Margot.
You were on it before the JPA, the both of you?
Yes, thank you.
Judy, did you want to be on that?
I mean, that's fine, if you guys want to continue, we've got a good thing going.
Okay, and if they need an alternate, or they can't make it, she can certainly. Okay, great, thank you, Ms. Manishari. Health and Safety Commission, I believe.
Well, I've been doing it, and I really would love to continue. They really, they've expressed a desire. I get along really well with them, and I have.
You're popular there, okay.
Well, I don't know if I'm popular, but.
She's popular everywhere.
I think it's a great fit for me, so.
Okay, great, so thank you, Ms. Marcus. Human Relations Commission, I've enjoyed, but I would like for Noah.
I would like to do that.
Okay.
I did it, I did it early on.
A true union.
Got to keep an eye, got to keep an eye on things over there.
Oh, wait a minute, conflict of interest here. Not really.
Okay, beautiful. So, thank you, Noah. Okay, Recreation and Parks Commission.
I'd like to continue that, Judy and I have been doing it together.
Okay.
Do you want to keep doing it?
Okay, wonderful, so we'll continue with Ms. Manishari and Ms. Wells. District Finance Committee. Anyone, Ms. Manishari?
We've been doing that, I'm more than happy to continue.
Okay.
What are your thoughts?
I'd love to continue.
Great, so Ms. Manishari, Ms. Wells continuing on the District Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Okay. Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Which one are you going to take?
You know I love the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
She does.
Want the Wellness Committee?
I think so.
I'm happy to continue.
Okay, great, thank you.
Rochelle, did you want to do it?
If nobody else wants to.
I can come off that, and you can do it.
No, no, you can.
No, I, if you want to do it, I can step down.
Citizen bonds, good for you.
I'm easy, okay.
It's good for you, okay.
Is that like matzo ball soup?
I can be a backup, yeah, I can be a backup.
Great.
I'll probably watch them anyway.
Okay.
Wellness Committee, I would like to.
I would like to do that with you.
Okay, let's do it together. So Wellness Committee is Rochelle, Ms. Marcus, and Dr. Stern.
Okay.
All right.
Did you want to do that?
That was quick.
Yes, Citizen Bonds Oversight was Ms. Wells and Ms. Manishari. Okay, and the CTE Committee, which is Career Technical Education Committee.
I would like to stay on that one.
Okay, thank you, so Mr. Marco.
I think.
We had two people on it before, yeah.
Two, and I would like to also join that, unless you, yeah, I would love to be.
That would be great, okay, so for CTE Committee, we have Mr. Margot and Ms. Marcus.
It's Advisory Committee.
Advisory, okay.
Okay.
And that leaves us, that leaves us to Board Communications. I think as an honor, I will, may I begin with Mr. Margot?
Sophia.
You want to begin with Ms. Liveson?
Well, I thought I'd give you the honor, but.
She get, listen, she's got finals.
Yes, true, she's got finals, okay.
Say your piece and go study.
Okay. Board comments from our student member.
Not much. I do have finals, so congratulations, Dr. Stern. On congratulations, and yeah, see you next year.
Thank you. See you next year, good luck on finals.
Good luck, good luck.
Lock them down, open the ring.
Thank you, everyone who attended tonight, it was great to see everybody. Thank you to the PTAs that are throwing the reception, we appreciate that. Kbev, thank you very much, like always, and happy holidays and happy new year, everyone.
I'd just like to say congratulations to Dr. Stern. And again, congratulations to Mr. Margot.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. Mandy, I'm very excited for you this year, and looking forward to you taking the helm and to lead our board. I think we're really in a strong place, and I think you'll be a really strong leader. So we're really looking forward to it. Anything that I can do to help and assist, I'm here. And I'm just really looking forward to this year, it'll be a great year.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I ditto that, I think we've had a great year, and I'm super excited for the next one to come. I think we're just going to be really getting into a groove, so.
I also just say congratulations to Mrs. Marcus. We are so excited to have you as Vice President, and you have a great person at your right hand. So, it's going to be a really strong year. Congratulations, Mrs. Marcus.
Thank you, thank you. And I'd just like to welcome you aboard, I'm going to look forward to spending a year with you and getting to run the school board. I know that it's your first time, so I'm giving you all the help that I can. If you need it, you know that I'm here, and I want to congratulate you. And I'm so excited for you, and welcome aboard.
Okay.
Oh, one more thing.
Yes.
Can I say, I always like to say, oh, one more thing.
Yes.
I want to thank the members of the PTA, especially for the goodies outside. They always ask me if I can do something, and go ahead, my friend Laura, Margot and I have prepared. Margot and I have prepared some goodies for you, so the famous cake is there, that cake. And I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Also, just congratulations, Dr. Stern, Mrs. Marcus. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank the entire board. Education continues to see more things happening now than ever before. And I do want to take the opportunity, just on behalf of all the employees, to thank the board for the amount of time that you spend in your positions and the work that we're doing. You know, there's a unique thing about education, and it's more things keep being put on our plates as educators, and things aren't coming off. And so I know that you recognize that, all of you. And I want to thank you very much for understanding that and also partnering with us. And I think that through our work on the strategic plan, that I know that's going to continue, that you get to see all of that. So on behalf of all the employees here in Beverly Hills Unified, to just thank you for serving and partnering with us.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just have a few comments myself. I also want to take a moment to thank Kbev, of course, and also our Director of Security, because this young man, even though he's scrolling on his phone, is a fantastic leader, and he really has wrapped his head around the most intelligent way to offer many layers and redundancies to keep us safe. And that is no small thing these days. We all know that that is on our mind, and I'm just very, very thankful to all his efforts and the people under his guidance as well. I do have a little bit of swag that I would like to introduce. When I say swag, many of you did attend the opening of the Beverly Vista Middle School Bulldog Aid. And that's pretty incredible, because I know a lot of schools in the greater LA area, and very few have a dedicated mental health center just for middle school. They might have one for the whole district. And so that's really incredible, and that really shows that we really are concerned, which we are, and that we want to give as much support as we can to our students. So I want to thank some of the people who have worked with Bulldog Aid. They have these amazing things, and we'll see who will catch this. Ready? Ah ha, oh, no. Okay. All right, we have another one for the Norman Aid, and I think I know this young man here. Okay, let's see, we have another one who's ready. Okay, you got a smile. Look like you're, okay, this side. Oh, okay, there we go, Ms. Marcus's grandkids. All right. Now, I'm a twin, so hi, Molly, if you're watching. So I know how it feels when one is left out, so I will certainly throw the other one. Okay, and I think I have one more of the Norman Aid. No, you guys don't count. I can't throw that. Okay, I'm going to give this to Reese.
Raphael really wants the bouquet.
Thank you, everyone. So I think there is a reception that is next door in the EDC room, I guess we call it. So please join us, and thank you all, friends and loved ones who are watching and who have joined us. I am officially adjourning the meeting with my official
This is yours?
Thank you.